Okay, it's nine o'clock. Welcome. We're going to bring the meeting to order with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you for saying that we need to do is to approve the agenda. What's next?
Move, approve, agenda, support.
Okay. They're moving second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move. Motion carries. Public comments. Anybody who wishes to address us as a board coming up to the seat and give us your name, where you live, and anything that you want to say to us, open it up.
Well, my name is Laura Book, and I am a former employee as of Friday for Mahaska County Case Management. I live in rural Osceola, rural Mahaska County. So I just have a letter I'd like to read. On May 1st, 2013, you, the Mahaska County Board of Supervisors, voted unanimously to cease operation of county-run case management services June 15th, 2017. This vote resulted in the termination of all four case managers currently employed by Mahaska County on June 30th, 2017. As one of the four terminated case managers, I feel it necessary to convey my thoughts and concerns regarding these unfortunate actions. Our 80-plus clients were notified in a February 8th, 2017 letter from AmeriHealth Care Toss that there would be a transition for some of our members in the next few months. As time progressed, we were advised that this transition would likely be done by July. Clients were informed that they would receive a second letter at some point, which would then allow for them to be transitioned within 30 days. While there had been discussion regarding an impending closure and transfer of services to AmeriHealth Care Toss, we were continually advised by the Coordinator of Disability Services, Case Management Supervisor Heather Gross, under the directive from BOS Chair Mark Dolan, that until our clients received actual second notifications, there would be no changes in case management services, and we were to continue our position as business as usual. Clients received this notification of their transfer only after the Board of Mahaska County notified AmeriHealth Care Toss that their services would terminate June 15th, 2017. Following each BOS meeting, Ms. Gross continued to indicate that there were no changes in this plan. However, upon her return to our office from attending the May 1st, 17 BOS meeting, Ms. Gross was asked directly by myself and Case Manager Sharon Watson-Lopez as to whether there had been anything significant discussed. She nonchalantly replied, "No, not really." It was not until the following morning of May 2nd, 2017, when the Osceola Herald was delivered to our office with a headline declaring that we would be terminated, that we were informed of our closure. Notification of termination in this manner was undeniably highly inappropriate and unprofessional. Later that same morning, when I personally questioned her about this development and why the case managers were not informed when we had asked her directly about any developments at the board meeting, she replied only that many things had been discussed at the meeting and that she really didn't understand the vote. Shouldn't it be her responsibility as the direct supervisor of full four-time case managers and employees of the county to understand a vote that would affect their current employment? I beg to dispute her statement, given the video footage taken by CRI clearly documents the vote in question and notes the recommendation for closure comes from Mark Dolan, Heather Gross, and the Mahaska County Attorney. I would question the honesty and integrity of all those making the recommendation and ask why the case managers were not alerted to this life-changing vote. When the Osceola Herald published the article regarding the closure, not only were our clients taken off guard, but also parents, guardians, and other family members. Since that time, we had been advised that AmeriHealth Care Toss was unprepared for the suddenness of the closure, and they had been attempting to assign new case managers to fill the case manager void. At the time of notification, they had only had one case manager trained and ready to take on our clients. While they have assigned all of our clients at this time, two of the assignments are only temporary, and of those temporary assignments, clients have already been reassigned yet again, with the other temporary assignments awaiting reassignment. This not only creates confusion and uncertainty in the lives of our clients, but causes frustration with services and possible disruption of those services. By making this seemingly easy vote to disrupt the lives of many persons with disabilities, it implies that those making the recommendation have little regard for those clients and their lives are less significant. I find that very disturbing and concerning, as do many others, many of whom are registered voters in this county. The responsibility of the Board of Supervisors of Mahaska County is to represent all the citizens of this county with professionalism and integrity. Are persons with disabilities less deserving of this representation? Rule six in the duties and responsibilities of Mahaska County Board of Supervisors is to oversee the health and social service needs for all county residents, not some, but all. Lastly, what was the reasoning to expedite the closure? The 1718 budget, of which case management was a part of, had already been approved earlier in the year. As a cost-based entity who essentially pays for itself through reimbursement, what was the need to rush the closure? It has been a 19-year practice for our case management unit to advocate for the clients we serve and represent Mahaska County in a manner of the highest, utmost standard. We have been careful stewards of county dollars and assisted clients in this area with becoming as independent as possible. To intentionally inflict unnecessary hardship onto those clients' lives might make many question the priorities of those with decision-making power in the county. Furthermore, to treat four employees from Mahaska County with a combined 64 years of faithful employment with such little respect also speaks volume. The four case managers and their clients will go on to achieve further success in life despite this shameful situation. In the aftermath of departure, some questions should be addressed, such as how should employees in the future be notified of termination in the county? As in our case, we finally received an official notification on May 26th, 2017, almost one month after the vote, in the form of a letter placed on our desks. Until that time, we seemed quite insignificant, as only one of the Board of Supervisors even came to our office to speak to us. In this notice of termination, we were asked to have our personal items removed, and a walkthrough was to be conducted of our offices before we left on our last day of employment. Personally, how was it that I was able to work for Mahaska County for 19 years, even well into the evening, unsupervised at my office to ensure my work was completed, but I needed to have a walkthrough before exiting on my last day? What is to become of our case management supervisor? Who was half-time case management supervisor? Since the case managers are terminated, which was half of her position, it seems only logical she would then become part-tenant employee. Why were the case managers not questioned by the board regarding this situation? I would strongly recommend that all of the board members take the time to learn more about the various departments before casting votes that impact so many. For example, I have yet to even be introduced to one of the current board members, and his vote allowed for my termination. Sorry, Mark.
I'm sorry.
In addition, I am very disturbed by Chair Dolan taking action in this transition, independent of other board members, such as speaking with Ms. Gross without other board members, signing off on our termination letters in a closed-door meeting with her, and meeting with her privately without other board members present to develop recommendations. It seems increasingly more common for him to have discussion outside of the board meetings and then make executive decisions without the counsel of the other two members. It's highly inappropriate for one board member to execute decisions according to his or her own agenda. I have greatly enjoyed my employment with Mahaska County for the past 19 years, and have appreciated all the benefits provided as such. I've developed positive relationships with fellow county employees, as well as providers, parents, guardians, and clients I have interacted with over the years. I regret greatly the ending of my tenure, which has come about in such an unfortunate and questionable manner. I would hope that the respect for reliable and conscientious employees will improve, and the professionalism of our elected board members and the department supervisors will as well. All Mahaska County residents should have the same expectation of honesty and appropriateness in our county government. Thank you for your time and consideration, this matter. Laura Book, Chris Van Wyk, Sharon Watson-Lopez, and Amber is another case manager. So if you'd like a copy of our termination letter or a copy of this letter, I'd be willing to provide that. If you have any questions, we have other case managers here, but the other two, I know, Mark, you've been involved more significantly with Heather through this, but if you have any questions or comments, we're willing to answer them. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but... You good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Close this portion of public comments. You can, well, I have another section at the end of the agenda for more comments. Next, we need to approve the minutes from June 19th.
Approve, approve.
Order. They're moving second to approve the minutes from June 19th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approve June bills.
So move.
Order. They're moving second to approve the June bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion carries. Accept the fourth quarter report from the auditor.
Approve, approve.
Order. Yeah. They're moving second to accept the fourth quarter report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Paul.
Good morning.
Morning.
So earlier this morning, I sent you a 70-some-page document. Wasn't, most of the time, people don't read it because it's a human resources document. It's not very interesting. But essentially, it's a summary of the audit report. So the audit report itself, certainly review if you have any questions. I'll be open for any questions at a point in the future when you had a chance to review it. Today, it's just a kind of a simple review, essentially an executive summary of what that audit ended up showing. So as we talked about last time, county government is different than a private sector business. It's a different human resources-related function. Additionally, it's, part of it's driven by the hierarchy. And so essentially, if you're in a private sector business, you have a president, vice presidents on down. It's all, everybody essentially reports ultimately to one individual. What's unique in human resources as it relates to county government is elected officials and external boards and commissions. And those external boards and commissions have considerable autonomy in what they do. So overall, what we see is inconsistency county-wide, and that was certainly to be expected. In the sense that, right, with those external boards, commissions, and the elected officials, those groups can be consistent in how they handle their employees and work with their employees and deal with HR-related items, but then county-wide, there's some inconsistency. So department to department or office to office, they may be consistent, but then the bigger question is, how does the county as a whole handle these issues? The potential problem is, if there were ever a civil rights complaint or a lawsuit, the county is going to look at as one employer. And so that's, it's pretty common, what I would see in county government, is that within an office or department, they may be consistent, but county-wide, there can be some inconsistencies. And so what I noted, as you see in this executive summary, with the recruitment process. So one of the questions asked in the questionnaire was, how do you handle if you have an unsolicited application or resume? So we don't have a job open, and yet somebody that drops off a resume or an application, what do you do with it? And what was noted is, some departments and offices won't accept it, say, "We don't have an opening, so we're not going to accept it." Others will accept it. And then the question, and it really becomes a legal issue, is, when that applicant drops that off, how long do you tell them you're going to keep it on file? And what I noted is, again, some don't take them, some will accept them and say, "We'll take them for six months." You have other departments that say, "We'll do it for, well, we'll accept them and we'll keep them on file for a year." Some of them are at two years, some of them are at three years, and some of them are taking indefinitely. Okay? So it's just an internal process. Now, the concern from a legal standpoint is substantial in just making sure that we can be consistent in what are we going to do as a team? So as a county as a whole, what should be the policy or the process on accepting or not accepting applications, so unsolicited? Another one was as far as job postings. So is the county consistent in making sure that we're posting all open jobs for at least a 10-day period? So the 10-day period is driven off of the Veterans' Preference Act. And again, we're a little inconsistent, that some will do it readily, others may not post them at all, is what the feedback I received. So some gets inconsistency there. The application form, some departments and offices don't require an application, others do require an application, and it looks like we have at least a couple that are being used, so different application forms, which again, can be problematic, but it would be just a matter of trying to get together as a team and saying, what should we be doing moving forward? Within the selection process, background checks, reference checks. So you've got an employee, you're an individual that applied, and you're looking to hire them, what are you doing as far as reference or background checks? Some offices and departments don't do any kind of, they don't check for employment history, you know, others will do it more formally. You know, again, the goal here would be to be, to make sure that we're doing it consistently across the county. Now with all of these, there can be liability. So there's something called negligent hiring, that if you don't do your due diligence, essentially, to check someone's employment history, that can be problematic. So there would be an opportunity to try to improve that process overall. With interviewing, quite a bit of variation. So some will just interview one-on-one, there's a handful that do a team-based interview. For the most part, it sounds like people have developed their interview questions up front, but some do not. And then also, a question is, do you follow that format? Do you ask questions that aren't on the form? And again, trying to look for ways to improve consistency. So again, we bounce around a little bit as to what we do during those interviews themselves. With all these, I mean, going back to the top, with the unsolicited applications, the question is going to come down to, you know, in my private sector life, I was actually sued for this under the Civil Rights Act, because we told people, "Hey, if you apply for a job, we'll keep your application on file for a year." Okay, so this is the point to this, is keep it on file for a year. So we had, we were looking to hire a receptionist. This was a parent company in St. Louis, Missouri. And they put the job out there, I think we had 600 people apply to be the receptionist. We went through the recruitment, ended up selecting the most qualified individual. Then she quit half a year later. And so then the organization said, what do we do? Do we go back to the other list of 600, or should we repost it? Well, what they did is, they reposted the ad. And so then 600 more people applied. Now, they ended up selecting the most qualified individual, and the civil rights complaint came out from the person who applied round one and said, "Did you include me? Did you re-review my application?" And the organization said, "No, because we re-advertize." And they said, "But didn't you tell me my application is on file for a year?" So there is some concern with that. And the other part of county government is, if we're going to allow employees or applicants to drop off an application or resume, and we're going to keep it on file for a period of time, even if we don't have a job opening, we really need to have a master file to do that. Because what might happen is, you may have people dropping off things at secondary roads or conservation, but the county as a whole is going to be considered the employer. So if we're going to tell applicants that we're going to keep their application on file for a year, you need to have one master file, and if we do that, it's essentially going to say, every job that comes open within that period, you're going to be included. We're going to review your application resume. So as a team, I think we just need to get together and say, what are we going to do with this? And what's going to be the process moving forward? Pre-employment testing, there's at least one officer department that does their own pre-employment testing. So it's kind of like a skills test. So when I want to apply for the job or I'm going through that process, they have to take essentially a test. Now, that's okay, but there is a legal standard that says any sort of pre-employment testing has to be both reliable and valid. So that would be one area that I had some concern on, to make sure that we go back and review that, to make sure that the test being offered is both reliable and valid. And it's essentially saying, you need to create, if you're going to do some sort of pre-employment testing, it has to be indicative of their success at the job. So you, right, we couldn't say, you know, "Show me your ACT scores," okay, unless we can make a clear correlation between that score and how well they were doing. So we'd have to, that would be one thing to go back and review and make sure that that's legally compliant. The drug testing, we had spoken of last time, as far as, the Iowa law is currently written for private sector employers only. And so with the drug testing, the issue that pops up is, if we're doing any sort of a pre-employment testing for non-DOT people, then we need to have a separate policy to be able to do that. So that's one part of it. If you're going to have that as an option to test county employees, then we would need to do training with supervisors annually, so that's required by Iowa law as well. Another one that's popped up recently is, I'm looking at Dave back here. I've had three counties, so your secondary roads folks that have a required CDL, they're already in a random drug testing pool. The question comes in as to whether or not our secondary roads department has an up-to-date policy as to what should happen to employees if they test positive for alcohol or drugs. And so this is something I've just stumbled across in the last month. I've had three different secondary roads departments in different counties all test, two of them were random. So a random gentleman, I think, had an alcohol contact of .039 at 7:30 in the morning. Now, the DOT regs say, you have to pull him off of that position for the rest of the day, right? Get him out of that safety census job. But what this county didn't have is, what should happen to them as far as an employee, right? Should they be written up? Is it a verbal warning or written a suspension? So the DOT part will handle itself, taking him out of that job, but then what would this county board of supervisors want to do to say, "Hey, you know, we can't have that kind of behavior at work?" And what we found out is, the policy was from 1982, and it really didn't have anything in there at all. So that would be a challenge to Dave to say, do we have something in place that if that happened here, we can handle the DOT side, but what should we do as a county? The I-9 update, in reviewing the personnel files, there were, I don't know, again, this is very common, that the I-9 is that document to prove that you're eligible to work in the United States. So it's that document that you're going to show that typically bring in a driver's license and a social security card to prove you're eligible to work in the United States. In looking in the personnel files, there are, I think, somewhere around 450 errors. So if you were fine, if you were audited and fine, that could be upwards, actually more than $120,000 worth of final offenses within the I-9s. But again, it's very common. It's not, it wasn't surprising to me. So it's just, essentially, the document isn't quite filled out correctly. Now, by law, you have to have those in place within two days of appointment. So I don't know if that's the good news for the employees here. You guys all can't legally work today, so go home, take the rest of the day off. But that would be something we should look at and update those I-9s to make sure that they're accurate. With family medical leave is another substantial federal law. What's unique about FMLA is supervisors, actually, employees of the county can be sued if this is violated. So normally, in the labor law setting, as long as the employees are acting on good faith and in the interests of the county, the county's going to have a liability umbrella policy that protects their personal property. With FMLA, supervisors and managers of the offices can be personally sued. So it changes the rules that I would, if I'm a department head or an elected official in this county, I want to make sure I'm doing FMLA correctly. Now, you use an outside source for that, which is terrific, so that does help reduce your liability, meaning that when that outside entity has been notified, they handle the FMLA process. The concern I have is, are we notifying them when we should be? And there's a lot of misnomers and confusion about FMLA. So the heartburn I have is, are we notifying that organization when we should be? And if we're not, the department heads and elected officials need to know that that can be some personal liability. With FMLA, there are essentially three times that you should notify that group that this could be FMLA. The first one is if the employee calls in and says, "Hey, I need family medical leave paperwork." Okay, so if the employee says FMLA, that's going to be red flag number one, and we need to contact an entity. The second one is if anybody ever calls in sick for three days in a row. Okay, so if you miss three days in a row, we need to be notifying that organization. Now, in my opinion, that's not the auditor's office to catch that when timesheets come in, that's really up to the department heads to say, if we ever have an employee gone for three days or more, we need to be contacting that entity to send out FMLA paperwork. And then the third one is if anybody says anything that could be serious. And so this is kind of the gray area one. So if somebody calls in and said, "I'm not coming in today, I'm sick." No big deal, we don't have to worry about it. "Hey, I'm not coming in, my four-year-old has a ear infection." Probably not FMLA. "Hey, I was, my four-year-old is getting tubes put in their ears." Okay, now that's different, okay? "I was driving to work, my dad called, and he's running my mom to the emergency room, something's going on." Okay, so those are going to be the three events. So if it sounds like it could be serious, then we have to be notifying that entity. So the federal law is very clear that you would have to send out FMLA paperwork to their home via the U.S. Postal Service within three days of that potential qualifying event. So it's great that we have that outside entity doing it, but then the question would be, is I would want to do training with department heads and elected officials to say, "Make sure we're using this correctly." And if not, there can be considerable liability if we're not notifying them in advance. The personnel files overall, you know, pretty typical. There is some personal health information in them, which needs to be removed, so you can't have any sort of personal health information in a personnel file. It has to be in a separate file. So anything medical-related has to be in a separate file. Additionally, I-9s can't be in the personnel file, but there were a few, so you would need to get those out of there. And then also, just some inconsistency about what's in the personnel files. So I think about 7% of the files don't have an acknowledgement form for the employee handbook. So that would be something that we should take a look at and try to improve with the personnel files. The handbook overall, I mean, it's pretty up-to-date. I think it could still be useful to review it, make sure that we're handling it consistently county-wide. The reference process itself, so if I have an employee or a former employee that's looking for another job, and they call me to say, "Can I get a reference?" So we're pretty inconsistent as, what will we tell that new employer? So some counties, offices, and departments will say, name, dates of employment, job held, and wage. Others will go into more detail. So there is a state of Iowa law that protects employers, but still some confusion as to what we can tell that future employer. With job offers, we do both written and verbal. So a good number of the departments and offices do a written job offer. So a good number of the departments and offices do a written job offer. I think we should take a step back and review those to make sure that it doesn't appear to be forming any kind of a contract. So there's also a liability with written job offers. So things we should look at are to be, to make sure that there's any, there's nothing in there that suggests longevity. Okay, so if in our, if on our job offers, we're saying, hey, after one year, you're eligible for a 1% raise, or after six months, you get 75 cents an hour, you know, or after one year, you get one more week of vacation. Those types of things can give the indication that there's a promise that, hey, I at least, I get to keep my job for at least a year. So with those written offers, we should review those and make sure that they're compliant legally, and that it doesn't give any sort of an indication of an employment contract. So any of these you have questions, stop me, but I just wanted to kind of hit the highlights of those priority items. With performance reviews, again, a little inconsistent countywide. So some departments don't do them at all, some of them do them at different times. There might be a 60-day or a 90-day review, and then they do it annually. Generally speaking, the feedback I received was that, you know, those that do performance reviews don't necessarily believe that the reviews themselves are very effective. So that would be another area that we can try to take a look at and try to improve. As far as countywide, you know, should we require performance reviews? Are we going to leave it up to the department head elected official, and then try to come up with some sort of an instrument that we think made you a better job of evaluating With discipline, this is going to be handled, right? It's a little inconsistent, as it is, as it would be, because you have different department heads and elected officials that will handle this on an as-needed basis. So as the HR guy, from the outside looking in, this could be problematic, in that even though you may work for an elected official or an external board or commission, the employer is still considered the county. And so if we're, if we have different standards of discipline within county offices, that can be a problem. So it would be an opportunity to say, you know, are we being consistent countywide in setting expectations and holding employees accountable? With job descriptions, right, no one wants to write a job description. They're hard to write, you never have the time to do it, everybody's busy, they've got a billion other things to do. But in my experience, when we need them, is when we don't have them. So right now, we have some departments and offices that are up-to-date and accurate, others may not have them at all, or they're not current. And you don't want to get into a position that you're trying to write one when you need it. And those that I've run into, I think I've had up to four HR lawsuits and three civil rights complaints against counties just since the last time we've met. Many of them are related to someone's job. There was a question as to whether or not that employee could continue to perform the essential functions of their job. So we sent them to a doctor and say, hey, can they do their job anymore? The doctor says, do you have a job description? And at that point, is when the county's trying to create the job description, and we're running out of time. So it looks like we're now creating a job description to make sure that the employee can't do their job. And those are turning into lawsuits and civil rights complaints, saying, you're treating me differently because of a variety of factors. So that would be one that, you know, we're a little inconsistent, and it would be certainly beneficial to the county to get those all up to speed. Pre-employment physicals, you know, depending on where you are with work comp. So if you're willing to do, invest the time and money into pre-employment physicals, they can be a terrific investment, that you essentially create a baseline for new employees to say, this is where they are. Now, the cost of those can be, I would say, $150. So it's not like a physical where they're doing, you know, height, weight, blood pressure. This would be a functional capacity exam, where they're testing range of motion, strength, lifting ability. So if that's of any interest, again, it's probably driven off of your work comp right now, but if there's interest, I mean, the county can end up saving hundreds of thousands of dollars by establishing this baseline before the employee is hired. If you don't do them, and you have an employee that has a work comp claim down the road, without that test, it's assumed that they were at 100% when you hired them. And so it's assumed that they were perfect when you hired them, and now five years later, they have a permanent partial disability. And there's an impairment rating, let's say a 10% body of a whole impairment rating. Well, that can be, your body is worth 500 weeks of employment. So in the work comp world, your body's worth 500 weeks. Now, had we done that pre-employment physical upfront, we may have been able to establish you were really only at 95%. And the difference between 95% and 90% is substantial. So that's something that we can take a look at as well. With compensation, always a difficult issue in any organization, right? If I bring all county employees into this room, ask them to raise their hand if they're overpaid, right? No one's going to raise their hand. So typically, what counties run into is, right, I see some smiles, that's true, that's true, huh? Really, typically, the boards will do a cost of living, they'll call it a cost of living, but it's probably not really driven off of the true cost of living. It's probably more of a budget issue and/or a union contract issue. So generally, some inconsistency with that. So it sounds like some of those that responded with the survey, they would be eligible for the annual review. Others might have a step system where they get a 60-day increase, a 90-day increase, and then a pay increase annually. So some inconsistency overall on how we do compensation. And then classification. So classification is dealing with, is this employee an exempt employee, or are they non-exempt? Okay, so lots of people call it salaried or hourly. And I'd say, get those terms out of your head. Okay, just call them exempt or non-exempt. So if you're a non-exempt employee, that means you're eligible to earn overtime or comp time. Okay, so overtime and comp time, to me, are the same things. If you're an exempt employee, you earn a salary over the course of a year, and your paycheck doesn't change based on the number of hours worked. So in this feedback, I had some people share with me who they believed were exempt, and it's, I don't believe it's accurate. So essentially, in a county, I would say, we probably need to look at the chief deputy. That usually, that's a, you know, is our chief deputy on patrol? Or are they somebody that are supervising people? Is it a supervisory job? Like a road superintendent, so secondary roads, second-in-charge, kind of a gray area as well. In conservation, a naturalist, you know, so there's some positions within a county that that's part of the question. Public health nurses, same thing. By law, a registered nurse is exempt, but many places pay overtime and or comp time. So that would be another area to look at, to make sure we're doing that consistency, consistently across the county. So in county government, I would say, the most common positions that are exempt is going to be driven off of, one of them, one of the exemptions is, do you supervise two or more people 50% of the time? Right? Are you a supervisor of people? Meaning that 51% of your job is administrative. If the answer is yes, then they can be considered an exempt employee. The second most common in county government is autonomy. I don't supervise two or more people, but I am considerably autonomous in my position. So it's, let's say, a full-time Veterans Affairs Director. Even though they typically don't supervise anybody, they can commonly be thought of as being exempt employee. And then the third one is going to be based on, it's called a, I think it's the professional exemption. You went to school in the topic of science or learning, you know, so that's the naturalist, that's the RN, those positions that you went to school for and earned a degree of some sort after a prolonged course of study. So again, it's not uncommon that we may not have our people coded correctly. Now, that can be substantial as well, in that the Department of Labor has a two-year statute of limitations on lawsuits. So that would be an area we should look, take a look at as well. Cobra notification, I think we're using an outside place, that's great, so keep doing that. And then finally, with the military and veterans preference, and this is one that I've run into more and more frequently as of late, that anytime we have a new position, we have to post that publicly for 10 days. Now, if you have a union contract, that can trump this, but essentially, without a union contract, we have to openly post it for a minimum of 10 days to encourage our military folks to apply for those positions. And they do have a preference in Iowa. Additionally, if we were ever going to separate employment with a veteran, there's a specific process that you have to follow to make sure that those things are addressed. They have a chance for a hearing. The rules are just different, and I've run into a whole bunch of issues in counties where we're kind of flirting on the edges if we're following that correctly. So that's my, as quick as I could be, with an executive summary. Again, just today, you received the whole report, so completely up to the board as to, you know, how you want to move forward. Essentially, that report is intended to be a roadmap, kind of give you a snapshot of where we are today. Your choices are really to say, that's what we needed, we wanted to know where we were, and we're going to handle it internally. If you want help from me, I'd be happy to help. But really, you know, you may, if you want to read that whole report, you certainly can. And if we need to set up another date after you've had a chance to review it and talk about it in more detail, I'd be happy to do that as well. What do you got to say?
I don't know what to tell you. There's a lot of stuff in a little bit of time. What do we want to do? I guess that's.
What do we want to set up another meeting and take time to look through it, through the report? And have him back and kind of maybe prioritize some things and absolutely take care of them? Or do we want to handle it internally, let the department heads take care of it?
Some of this stuff has to be uniform across the entire county, so it's going to be, just the heads getting together, it's going to be a top-down effect to make sure everybody's
Might be good, we review it, we set up, I guess at some point, it looks like we would meet with, Paul would meet with the department heads and go through this and make sure everybody is on the same page. I guess that's, would be the process.
Yeah. Well, what, right now, we have a two-month relationship with Paul, is that what we?
Yeah, just for the audit, so we just, the audit.
So we've, I mean, this is the end of it, unless we want to continue the relationship and have him come back, or if we want to do it somewhere else, or if we want to do it ourselves, we can do it any way we want. So I guess that's the decision that we have to.
Exactly. And to me, again, no matter who you use, to me, there would be a great benefit, you know, so as an example, I work with Appinels County. So they're a county that's not big enough, where they don't want to afford their own HR person. So I serve, it's essentially their part-time HR guy. So I'll be on-site once a month, deal with any other issues that arise, you know, it's essentially their 24/7 support. We'll get together, meet, talk about any HR issues, I'll keep them up-to-date on due HR laws. And, I mean, that's been my role with that organization. The same thing here, I think a number of these priority items could be addressed in a short period of time. It's just a matter of getting everybody together and saying, okay, this is what you do now, what should we do as a team? You know, what should the process be for performance reviews? What should the process be for an orientation period? What are we going to do with unsolicited applications? You know, so part of it, again, the inconsistency isn't because, you know, it's not a negative thing. It's just every department office is kind of a unique position, and they run their show the way they need to run their show. So I don't, I would imagine that many of these would be just, yeah, we don't have a problem with changing it, we didn't do it in a bad way, we just, no one else came in and said, hey, countywide, we're a little inconsistent.
What do you think, Sue? Do you deal with a lot of this?
I think you should think about, look at the report.
Yeah.
And make a decision.
Yeah, definitely, just want to make sure it's good trustees, whatever, if something happens, trustees have to deal with it. It's all going to happen, but.
Absolutely. Look at the report and determine what will hold.
That's it.
All right. Take care, have a good Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Prove the 20th year between the sheriff and the department and the city. Do you approve agreement?
I could make a point, I want change to that agreement. We changed that calendar year contract to a fiscal year. That was the one of the four, it was Rick January, January, and easier on for any of those fiscal, fiscal. Actually, when I approached them about the, right, the first year, easier on them as well, so it is in line with the fiscal, fiscal year, that's the calendar year.
Are you going to pick all of them eventually, physically come due?
They're all fiscal now.
Okay, they all?
Yeah, this was the one, this was the odd contract out there. It was the one that we've got switched over to fiscal now. And the city of Fremont was actually more in favor of it too, they were just waiting to be asked, so.
All right.
One second, turn, between sheriff and city of Fremont, Paul, let's go over there and say hi. And then, number eight is the cops. I met with Russ last week, and he had asked if we would be interested. He's appreciative of the deputy we just put on, make your deputy we just put on, and fill a position that hadn't been filled for a while. Those brought his attention, there's some grant dollars for three years, 75% of the salary of another deputy. Should he put another one on? There's been some, sure, some rise in opiates and those kind of things here. Do you want to use this extra deputy as an investigator? And we'd be responsible for, obviously, the 25% of the salary, a little bit of this. So there's no guarantees, but he wanted to see what we thought before he writes the grant, because it's an extensive grant process.
The cops grant's been around for several, several years. They don't know exactly, all they say is 20, 25 years. They, through the Department of Justice, kind of like the rest of us, when they have a bad year or a tough year, they don't eliminate the grant, but they stop it off and on. I received, like I was telling Mark, I received notice of it last week, very short notice of it, because it is, it is due by July 10th. Mark said it is a three-year grant, and if you're eligible or you are awarded this grant, the federal government will cover 75% of wages and benefits for a deputy for a three-year period. The county would be responsible to cover the 25%. Mark put me in touch with Deanne DeGroot, she's been tremendous help. At this point, I don't know that we're going to meet the deadline, simply because, we're not going into too much detail, we had a DUC number, it's a number that is assigned to the county, specifically to the sheriff's office. You have to have one of those numbers to accomplish federal funding. That expired back in 2010. Typically, to get a DUC number, it takes three to four weeks. Deanne's worked very diligently last weekend, over the weekend, trying to get ours, not a new number, get a renewed, reactivate it. I'm still waiting this morning to hear if that's been done. So it may be a moot point altogether. If we don't get that DUC number, reactivate it, we won't meet the deadline. If we don't get that DUTS number reactivated, we won't meet the deadline. I have some, just very rough figures. My three-year, let me back up. Since I talked to Mark, I actually looked into the grant a little bit deeper, it's a three-year grant. The COPS grants used to require a two- or three-year retention period, meaning you keep this in first months for years after the grant ends. Guarantee that, that is down to 12 months, it's one year. So it's, it's actually a four-year project, if you look at that, with the fourth year being all on the county. Just very rough figures, I figured out a deputy similar to the last one we hired, several years of law enforcement experience, and certified through the ILEA already. Using family coverage for a benefit for health insurance, we're looking at $177,000 for the three-year period. Their 75% is $132,000. The COPS grant encapsulated their 75% at $125,000 for the three-year period. Boils, quite boils down to, it's $14,000 a year for the county for the first three years. Okay? Those numbers go down in the event you hire someone who doesn't have, say you hire someone with one year of experience, or you hire a deputy who's not certified through the ILEA, those numbers go down considerably, by $24,000. And, and if you hire someone who only has single coverage insurance, it drops to $24,300 over the three-year period. Then, of course, your FICA and your IFRS drop accordingly. Mark's right. Can't tell you how appreciative I am of the deputy you just let me hire. I ain't no salesman, you know, I told you guys that position was to get us back where we were 12 years ago. I would like to apply for this. I did check if we apply, and I understand you guys want to talk, you guys want to hear from the community. That's why I asked Sue just to put the discussion on today, not to have a decision made today. I've already double-checked, and if possible, if I can meet the deadline, I'm going to apply. And there's no penalty if we withdraw, in the event you folks vote it down, down the road, so.
This is a person, in addition, this is a new person?
Yes. This cannot, this, this grant can only be used to put additional people on, or to bring people back who have been laid off. It's in a, it's above and beyond what your old budget is for. And I've got, Mark, did I leave these with you? Bobby did today.
Will they be?
Just leave that one for you, this one here will really slow it. Like Mark touched on this, we have to have a program. This isn't just us asking for the Department of Justice, take, you give us funding for a deputy, you have to come up with a program. It's got to, it's got to be through the, you know, the community policing. Several people have talked, we have a meth, and now a heroin and opioid problem in the county, not just county, statewide, nationwide. My program would be written from a standpoint, we need a deputy to police several of our, all of our towns in the county, with the exception of Oskaloosa, not just incorporating one, I'm incorporating one, due to the high number of burglaries and thefts going on. Talk to anybody who makes an arrest, anybody from the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, who makes an arrest for a theft or a burglary, there's a pretty high percentage, about 90% of it is drug-related.
What about the, the new synthetic?
Mark and I were talking about, we've had four overdoses since the first year in the county. Two in the county, two in the city. Heroin is an opiate, but we now have a synthetic opiate in the area, it's fentanyl. Fentanyl is medically approved. You know, if you go out here with severe kidney stone pain, you're going to get fentanyl, it works like a charm, make sure. Fentanyl is 1,000 times more potent than heroin. And now, we have another drug, another, fentanyl is a synthetic opiate, it's a synthetic, heroin is much stronger. We now have another synthetic drug in the community. Manadethamid, an overdose drug, our task force sees some of this over Knoxville, it's called carfentanol. Carfentanol is 10,000 times stronger than heroin. Of the four overdoses we've had in our county since the first year, we've been very fortunate. Our paramedics carry Narcan, is, is, is like the counteract, temporarily. I was on one of the four calls. 21-year-old girl just stops breathing, opiates, depression, respiratory system, she just stopped breathing. My opinion, a couple of my reserve deputies did CPR, not, not that chest compressions, because her heart is still beating, but we breathed for her until the paramedics could get there, and they gave her the Narcan. 30 seconds later, she sits up and says, what's going on? So we're very fortunate, you know, our paramedics carrying our, my deputies will be carrying Narcan with them here, I'd say within the next three months. But that's just an example of what Mark's talking about. It ain't going to get no better. Carfentanol, that's the names of the stuff, that's, that's the elephant in the tranquil life.
The nationwide opioid epidemic, we've heard nationwide is.
It's here, it is here. Question, I can answer for Dr. Graham.
Greg did land on July 10th, went into airbag, you've got a second.
In talking with the Department of Justice, the deadline is September 30th. September 30th, we'll have notified everybody by that point. The actual money wouldn't arrive here until around the first of the year, so, and the money is, the three-year grant and the retention period afterward, it doesn't start until the day they are hired, which you don't hire until the money gets here, so if you're looking at their, their calendar year, grant, not a six-year grant. There are several, several, I was looking up, there's several law enforcement agencies in Iowa who have officers under the COPS grant. You know, Esterville, smaller, they've got one, I think they're running three guys under it, there're just several of them, maybe in the metro area. There's no guarantee we'll even be accepted, that it is, it says on that paper, 137, 187, I mean, they, they designated for this. And there is, they do, they do give extra points for those who have a program for anti-terrorism and anti-terrorism, that type of thing. When you do the comparisons of number of deputies, I told you guys I'm very thankful for number nine. I think actually I think we're going to want.
You guys, I did some quick research of the surrounding counties. We have a population of roughly 23,000, we're nine deputies. Marion County has roughly 33,000, there are 14 deputies. Waukato County, they're 35,000, they have 11 deputies. Kipset County is a 10,500 population, they have five deputies. And Potters County, they're doing very well, they're a population of 18,000, so, and they have 11 deputies. Don't know what the gap is across the state, but.
Y'all three have my numbers, if you have any questions, you can think of my earlier calls.
So you're going to try to get the number, negative, July 10th?
We're going to try. Deanne's worked pretty diligently, and I've worked pretty hard since it's all. I got it, no, I got it written down. So, if you have any questions.
I think I made it for us.
Okay, approve Resolution 2017-14, operating transfers FY18. We received this. Talked about it at our last meeting. Just determine what it is we're going to do with it.
Move to approve.
Move and second it.
Resolution 2017-14.
For operating transfers for FY18, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries. 2017-15, is an appropriation of that?
Move to approve Resolution 2017-15.
Support. Okay. Move and second it, approve 2017-15, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries. Next, we need to approve the salaries, we set the budget for 2017, or excuse me, FY18.
It's support. Salaries.
Word. Okay. Mark and Willie second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries. Approve Resolution 2017-16, to set a public hearing date on proposed action, institute proceedings for the issuance of, not to exceed 4.95 million geo-local option sales tax funds. This is in the process for approving, approving some dollars to go towards the Environmental Learning Center. There's also, it also doesn't limit us from spending more on road projects if we have a road goo in the city or something like that, kind of as an emergency fund, so. Even though we, even though we will be rated on this, that doesn't mean that that's what we'll screw.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-16.
Support.
Okay. Move and second it, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries. Consider DOT sale offer.
You got to set a date, screws that all in.
10th of August, August 7th at 9:15.
There, first meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry. Number 13, consider the DOT sale offer. We get these periodically. Do you have, up to the day, a recommendation?
It is a little parcel in the southwest corner, basically, where the Eddieville Racetrack is. I think they've been probably using it, it's been mowed and maintained, so I'm guessing that the racetrack and this facility, it would benefit them for parking and what have you. There wouldn't be enough area for us to get any advantage of having it.
Right.
We, we need a motion that we don't want it, or?
Yes, we'd have to make a motion to reject the.
I move that we reject the offer.
Support.
Move and second it to reject the offer from the DOT to Bylan, Southland. Eddieville Racetrack, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries.
I'll wait till public comments, or if you don't mind now, we're doing some repair to G29, that was damaged quite substantially from the excessive traffic on it, so we'll have the eastern parts a little over 200, some thousand to put it, similar to what we did on G71, to their, the western portion, we had a 600-foot section, we had removed it, put a full dead patch, plus we had another 32, 100 feet of damage pavement there, so they should be finished with that this week, and we'll still be open to one lane traffic, Jeff, so.
Okay. The annex options, we had, we had this on the agenda last time with the offices that are open there. We talked about moving some employees from the annex over to the courthouse, maybe up by the DOT, or the DHS office. Willie had suggested maybe that we move some other staff over into the annex rather than moving the people out of the annex into the courthouse. I talked with, talked with the Veterans Affairs guy, and I talked with Patty Reth about that option, and they will see, we'll get with it. Patty, a little bit less thrilled about it, but once she found out it wasn't going to be in the basement.
Oh, did that make a difference?
Yeah, sure did. She thought that would be okay. She don't want to be stuck in the basement.
Went through that.
Just looking at the, you know, what it would cost to, or the work that would be involved in moving people into the basement, almost is counterproductive to our overall plan for crock out of security as well. We've talked about wanting to make it to where we would only have one entrance to the courthouse open, that's the main entrance, the back ones would be secured. Willie was on that last year, and, and we haven't, the reason why we can't secure the basement is because our elevator don't go to the basement, and we have to have handicapped accessible entrance, which is, comes in from the door on the north side of our building. Without public traffic going into the basement for Veterans Affairs and Juvenile Court Services, we would be able to achieve that, and so, where you guys thoughts on moving Veterans Affairs and Juvenile Court Services over there? And how, I mean, if we want to set a time on it, we probably want to have it done before winter, whatever it is that.
There are four offices over there that are good, they're not the last ones, so they each have their own private office. And we'd have to move a conference room, but that would become one of them, I assume. Because Darren, you have, you have some stuff over there, right? Do we have stuff over there, or 911 have stuff over there?
I have stuff over there currently. I house backups over there and secondary domain controller. That's, that's the bulk of what I have over there. So it's kind of a secondary network closet.
No, I don't know if that's the perfect solution, but, you know, we could empty it out and sell, sell it again, too. I don't know, it's close, it's, I, yeah, I talked to Kurt, and he said that, he makes a lot of trips to the Recorder's Office every day, but if you kind of combine them up, it wouldn't be quite as back and forth, and I don't know. It'd be easier, I think it'd be a lot of, very accessible for veterans, because a lot of times, the spaces are taken around the, around here for trial and all that stuff, so. It's a matter of, do we want to maintain that building and do it that way? I, I'm kind of inclined to do that, but.
I got, yeah, I've had a chance to talk with Kurt, I've not talked to Patty yet, does the same issues he spoke with me about.
Yeah, so. I guess spread, spread the word, and if we get a lot of, a lot, a lot, a lot of opposition, we may have to relook. I mean, is it?
I tell you, keep talking about it, maybe get a better idea, maybe get a worse idea as time tick.
Just say that we want to have it done before winter, you know? We would like to have the transition done before.
Because I think you're going to rearrange that corner where Patty's at, that's, that's kind of, it's all chopped up anyway, I don't know.
Yeah.
Troy says.
I don't think that's going to work. Can't really take out a 32-inch wall, that's what needs to happen.
It'd have to be under one office. One bigger office could go in there, but to put four smaller offices autonomous, wouldn't work. It would, spend the money, but it's going to be a lot of money. Be a lot easier just to view, seems to make a lot of sense, we, we still have obligation to provide other services in that building, at least until spring next year. Okay? We keep looking at that, and if we hear anything back, maybe we'll put that on the agenda for about another month, so that may be.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
We are. Other public comments? Okay?
Move to adjourn.
Move and second it to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Both, motion carries. We are adjourned.[1783.13]